Progress.
I would like to welcome everyone to our village board meeting of April 19th. Will everyone please rise for the national anthem in a moment of silence for the victim of last week's subway shooting in Brooklyn? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Kelly Norton, would you please sing the national anthem? Is your mic working? Okay, so before I begin, I want to start by introducing your village board. At my far end is trustee Christopher Graziano. Next to him is trustee Vic Forelli. Next to him is trustee Tara Burek. Next to her is my deputy mayor, Jesus Gomez. Into my right is village clerk Desiree Potman. So before we begin the meeting, we have two additional items on the agenda, and I'm going to stand for this. So I'd like to start by presenting a very good friend of mine with her plaque for service to the village of Woodbury. So I'm just going to give you a brief history of Sandy Capriglione here. I will not touch upon anything involving alcohol or wine, okay? But I'll strictly keep it to her service on the zoning board with me, which is where I first met Sandy. So we had an opening on the board. It was Stabeel who was coming off, and I was told that we were getting some wonderkind as our new zoning board of appeals member. So here I am, sandwiched between Vic Forelli and Kevin Abrams, and I can actually feel the brain cells leaving my brain as I was sitting between them. And at the far end of the table is Karen Ungara and Sandy Capriglione, who amazingly came to the meeting completely, not even prepared. Prepared would be an understatement. Overprepared would be more like it, with facts dating back from the 1920s, okay? I remember my first dialogue with Sandy was, "Where did you find all this information?" And then she says to me, "The internet." So my response to Sandy was, "How do you spell that?" So she went, she was on with us for some time on the zoning board and then went over to the planning board. And I had asked her to stay on, and as much as I would like to believe that she stayed on on the planning board for those additional six months, it had nothing to do with me. It had to do with her commitment to our community. So I want to thank Sandy for all her years of service to the village of Woodbury, all her hard work. The planning board really is no joke, so it's a lot of work, and I want to thank you. So this is a small token of our appreciation. Once again, I did ask for tickets to Hawaii and was turned down by the village clerk, so she's to blame. Speech, do you want to say anything?
Just thank you very much. I didn't expect it, so thank you very much.
Each of the board members has a bottle of wine for you as a parting gift. Oh, wait, wait, come here. I don't know how that's going to go. It's very colorful.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, my dear. Okay, so the second presentation I have is to, from our state senator James Scoofus to Vic Forelli. So for those who don't know, Vic, I, Jesus, CJ Graziano are all members of the Knights of Columbus here in Woodbury. Vic was honored by the Hudson Valley Chapter, which is basically the charitable arm of all the councils of the Knights of Columbus of Ulster, Orange, Rockland, Dutchess, and Sullivan Counties. So it was a big honor that Vic was named as their knight of the year. So I had asked Vic to meet with Senator Scoofus, where he promptly decided to brag about winning this award to the state senator. Then I had James reach out to me, and on top of that, then Brendan Coyne reached out to me. And there were some standard questions that the former mayor asked. There were some that were a bit odder than others, like if he was a boxer or a brief guy, whether his parted his hair to the left or the right. But I want to read it and then present it to him, and I want to thank the state senator, James Scoofus, for this. Whereas the Hudson Valley Chapter of the Knights of Columbus has chosen Vic Forelli as its 2020 Hudson Valley Knight of the Year, and whereas Vic has been a member of the Knights of Columbus for seven years, and whereas the Hudson Valley Chapter based its selection on Vic's serving as a grand knight, faithful navigator, district deputy, and editor of the chapter's newsletter. He has dedicated himself to helping his neighbors, and whereas Vic and his wife Noreen were married on June 28, 1997, and they have three children, Suzanne, Vincent, and Tony, and a grandson, Connor. And whereas Vic has worked for Gray Global Group, an advertising and marketing firm for 20 years, mostly in its pharmaceutical division, whereas Vic attends St. Patrick's Church in Highland Mills, where he serves as Eucharistic minister, whereas Vic is a Woodbury Village trustee and has served on the Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals, and whereas Vic is past president of Lions Club and past president of the Woodbury Community Association, and whereas the Hudson Valley Chapter of the Knights of Columbus honored Vic at its annual charity ball on April 2, 2022 at the Politan Club in Newburgh, now therefore be it proclaimed throughout the town and village of Woodbury and the county of Orange that we congratulate and thank Vic Forelli. And that's it. I got to read all that? Yeah, wow. Congratulations, Vic. All right. Is Bill, Bill, you here? All right, Bill, I would like you to come to the podium. I'm going to ask. Okay, because he's, Bill, come to the podium. It's Bill Canavan of Hydro Environmental Solutions, and I'm just looking for an update on your drilling.
Hello? You can hear me, right? Great. Pull it up like Big Jagger. It's funny, people actually get that, that's good. So my name's Bill Canavan. I'm a hydrogeologist with Hydro Environmental Solutions. The village hired us to assist them after a townwide geologic and hydrogeologic evaluation we did to find them more water. So the first stage of that was maybe two months ago. I met you guys on Zoom, and we decided to go ahead with the project. So I'm here now to update you on the project, which our group refers to as Troutbrook Wellfield 2. If you recall, we were involved with the first sand and gravel well there, which is in the midst of being permitted by Natalie's group, H2M Natalie Barber sitting over there, for about 260 gallons a minute, rounding up a little bit. And so now I'll update you on where we're at. First thing I'll say is that it's been really good working with Natalie and Mickey's group. So shout out to Mickey, Jason, and Brian, because they make it so easy on us. So I just want to say that on the record. So here's where we're at. We proposed over in that sand and gravel deposit, which is a glacial deposit we geologists refer to as a came deposit. Couple million years ago, it was deposited. To date, we've drilled two borings. We proposed three. The first boring we drilled, and I will say the drillers as well are amazing. So we're working with Rourke and Fry, and they've been great. We're going to be out there tomorrow. I'll be out there some. If anybody wants to see some cool geology, come out and check it out. The first boring we did, I refer to as TB 2-22. It's the middle boring, if everybody remembers the map from our townwide study. We had really favorable results there. By that, I mean bedrock was 131 feet below grade. We saw a really good formation, very permeable, high transmissivity and hydraulic conductivity formation at two locations, which was 80 to 90, and then deeper at like 120 to 130. So at that location, because we were so happy with what we saw at 80 to 90, we set a casing and a 10-foot screen, a well screen, 100-slot screen. Then we went further west, and we drilled another boring. Call that one TB 3-22. Did the same thing there. We felt we hit favorable formation. I think there we set the screen a little deeper, like 100 to 110, or 110 to 120. After we set the well screens, we do what's called well development. So the rig sets up over the hole, and it blows a lot of air down there and pumps the fines out of the screen. And after development, we felt that TB 3 was a little difficult, the one further west, closest to the road, a lot of fines, a lot of clay, a lot of silt. We pumped both of them, so we actually set a pump, submersible pump. And when we set the pump in TB 2, the middle boring, we hit really good water. And I actually sent Natalie a video of the nice groundwater coming out of the ground. So for 10 feet of 100-slot screen, we pumped like 140 gallons a minute, and we pumped it for six hours, and it just basically stabilized, which is what we want to see. It means there's a lot of water there, and when we shut the pump down, it basically shot up to static in like 20 seconds. So that means there's a lot of water there, and we think that TB 2 is going to be a really good location to set a production well. So the village tasked us, which I didn't mention, I should have, with finding permanent, long-term groundwater wells, production wells for the village's water supply. So we think at that location, we're going to, we're definitely setting a well there, okay? But by that, I mean, if you recall from the prior testing and study we did, that means we're going to set a 12-inch or a 14- or 16-inch screen, 10 to 20 feet of it. We're going to develop it, and then we're going to run a long-term pumping test. And in the state of New York, to prove that our water supply is viable for the village, we have to run a 72-hour test. The last time we ran one over there, we did 72-hour test. We got 257 gallons a minute with no surface water effects. In other words, the stream is not getting sucked into the well, so to speak, and there was no surrounding effects on any existing wells. So we think, from what we see, we have the same thing at TB 2. At TB 3, we're probably going to, right now, shy away from that, because we think there's too many fines, and we might have to develop it too much. It might not work out for us. So based on that, after we hit TB 3, I actually reported to Natalie, like, I think we only have to do two borings here, and we'll set possibly two production wells. But when we saw the geology, as we moved further west, we kind of were shying away from that. So now we're going to go back tomorrow, going to drill TB 1. We're going to find out if, fingers crossed, and I'm pretty sure, we're going to hit a really good formation there, and then the decision before the board and the town engineer and me is going to be, well, can we get two production wells in there? And by two production wells, I mean somewhere in the neighborhood of 400 to even 800 gallons a minute between the two wells. Okay, so I think after talking to Mickey and his group, I think you guys are looking for like 500 gallons a minute to augment the village's supply and meet the demands in the future. And so far, I'm going to knock on wood a little bit, but I think it's going to be there, and I'll update the group on the budget. That work I just described, two test borings, dropping the pump in the screens, and doing a quick, kind of down and dirty pumping test, we're at four days. I have 15 days in the proposal to you guys. So if it goes well tomorrow and/or Thursday, we'll be at six or seven days. So my hope is, we hit the good formation that I think is there. And I mean, I'll just quickly explain to you like visually. When you move from the existing well, the one that we're going to get permitted, west towards the road, the bedrock dips. So it gets deeper towards the road and shallower towards our production well. But we think, based on all the borings we've done out there, that the well, the next one we're going to do, TB 1, is going to be between TB 2, which we think is really good, and TB, the production well, which is good. So fingers crossed, the one in the middle, TB 1, is going to be good. Then I'm going to come back to the village and Natalie and say, here's where we're at. We think it's good. If it's good at TB 1, we're going to recommend another production well. If it's not, we're not going to. And so, so far, we're way under budget, and my hope is that the drilling in the next two days goes really well, we find good formation, we pump the water we think we have and we need. Then one thing I didn't tell the group is, we sent, we collected a whole bunch of soil samples, we logged borings, we sent them to a lab for sieve analysis. When we get the sieve analysis results back, I'll sit with the drillers, I'll plot it on a curve, and then we're going to decide diameter of the well, screen slot size, and how much water we think we can get. Everybody in this room, including Natalie, the town engineer, will be informed of that, and then we're going to make, and Mickey, and then we're going to make a decision on the final situation, whether it's one or two wells. Hopefully, we're going to find what I think is there, and we're going to get two wells in. The budget that was approved might actually cover that because of where we are in the project. I will regroup with Mickey and Natalie after we do this next boring, and then I'll report back to the village. And my hope is that we're either close, we can get two production wells, or we're going to have to come back to you guys and say, it's X amount beyond that original, but our feeling is, hopefully, it's a no-brainer. You're going to get a ton of water, and your water problems are going to be resolved for a long time. I'm trying to think if there's anything else I want to tell the board. Did I miss anything now? So that's kind of where we're at. By the end of this week, early next week, we're going to know about TB 1, and then I'm going to report back and say, and I think it was Tara that brought up, the last time I spoke to you guys on Zoom, she might have asked the question, well, how do you know there's going to be water there? And it was a good question, because we're like, we're used to rock wells, right? It's almost like throwing the dart at a map, saying, I hope there's water there. But here, with a sand and gravel aquifer like you guys have, this is a really good aquifer where we are drilling there, we're going to be able to predict accurately and long-term that you have that water. So if it's 200 gallons a minute or 400 gallons a minute, or 600, 800, after we do our testing, we're going to know. And it's kind of, it's mathematically like proven that you're going to have. It's not like a rock well where it's unpredictable. So that's so far, all really good news, and it's going really well. I hope it keeps going that way.
All right, Bill, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
So Natalie, Natalie, let me ask you. So does this, fingers crossed, of course, does this have the possibility where we don't need to go after that, the Leoni property, so to speak, in terms of researching it and doing the drilling? This could actually satisfy everything at this point?
I think that's definitely a possibility. We'll know more once the final testing is conducted and after the next report from Bill, but you know, it sounds promising.
Any board members with questions? CJ?
Just one. Drilling the three wells, they're far enough apart, is there any chance of interference at the site if you're trying to run them simultaneously?
There is, there is a chance of interference. When we pumped the new well, the test well, at the 140, there was no interference at any well over there at like 30 gallons, like 30 to 100 feet away. And then when we did the 72-hour test on a well that's going to be permitted, the well that was, I think, like 20 or 30 feet away towards the river, a test, a monitor well, it only had like 10 feet of drawdown. So the water level dropped only 10 feet. So we think you're going to be able to pump them simultaneously with minimum, minimal to no interference.
That's fantastic. No, thank you.
And there's no surface water impacts to date, so that's really good.
Yeah, we don't want Guedi either.
Yeah, we don't want Guedi wells.
Is that two or three?
That's, no, that, can you, I'm not, what were you asking me? Well, I didn't, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping, and it looks really favorable so far, but that would be with three wells. So our hope is that we have three wells ultimately, somewhere between 400 and 600 feet apart, that we can pump at their safe yields with no interference between the wells or no groundwater under direct influence of surface water, trout brook, or anything else.
And I'm sure when you do the testing and the drawdown, you'll give us a kind of an aggregate versus individual wells, because sometimes, you know, you may say they're all 200 gallons a minute, but we'll get 500 with the three of them combined or something like that.
Right, so what we would do is, if we all agree, we find a favorable formation, that we're going to set two new production wells. The next pumping test would probably be a simultaneous test with the two new wells, and then we'll monitor the existing well, so we can see what interference effects there are, if any. And we'll monitor, we'll put piezometers in the stream, too. And we'll do, we'll monitor existing homeowners, both bedrock and sand and gravel wells that are in the neighborhood there.
That's really good news. Excellent news.
So far, I hope it keeps going.
All right, any other board members with questions?
How long those wells will last?
Yeah, so a sand and gravel well, like the one we just put in, every three to five years, there's going to be some maintenance, like maybe an acid wash, some development, but 40, 50 years, they last a long time. If we designed the screen right, like we use really good components on the well that does 257, you know, it's continuous wrapped stainless steel screen, so that lasts a long time. If we take care of it, it's going to be a good well.
Okay, is Mickey Phillips on the line, if he wants to comment?
He's up there.
No, I'm good, mayor, thank you.
All right, any other board members, any questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Bill, I want to thank you for joining us this evening. Natalie, I want to thank you for setting it up. That's certainly good news. We will keep our fingers crossed that the news, the good news will continue. So thank you once again for being here tonight.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All righty, moving right along, okay? Public hearing, introductory local law of law number two of 2022, water rates. Desiree, will you please read the public notice?
This local law would amend section 298 of the village code entitled Water to provide for an amendment to the water rates. The public notice was printed in the Times Herald Record on April 12, 2022.
Thank you, my dear. Okay, so here we are this evening to talk about the increase in water rates. As you could see, there is a lot of investment being made by the village into making sure that we have water for years to come here. With that comes expenditures. The maintenance of the wells that we're talking about, and we have been expending a great deal of money on that, to the extent that I was thankful that Mickey Phillips decided not to retire, because we were able to find additional monies to use on a well rehab, well eight. It really shouldn't come to that. The water rate should be able to pay for all that maintenance that we need, and the taxes should pay for the capital improvements. So with that being said, I'd like to kick it to Natalie Barber, and you can give us your history on this and where we're at.
Sure. Earlier this year, the village asked us to review the existing water rate schedule, which was actually last adopted and amended in 2013, so over nine years ago. In doing so, we looked at the way the structure is set up, and we believe that it's a conservation-oriented approach, such that if a user uses more water, they get charged more for that usage. In our analysis, we also looked at the block sizes and the limits of the blocks, as well as a potential shift from tri-annual to quarterly billing. Our analysis found that all of that maintains to be appropriate, so we're not recommending any changes to those aspects of the rates. The next part of our task was to come up with a reasonable increase for the village to consider, and similar to what Mayor Jakomaza just said, the goal of the village is to decrease the reliance on tax levy and unexpended funds and increase revenue from metered water sales and essentially the consumption and the usage. We prepared three analysis or three scenarios for you to consider. The memo that we provided in March describes the average increase to users, the minimum-maximum percent increase, as well as how that impacts revenues and the overall expenses. Aside from the potential increases, we also made a recommendation that the village implement increases more frequently. That'll help you stay current with the needs for operating and maintaining your system, as well as providing sort of incremental, smaller increases to your constituents. And in doing so, one way that one of our other recommendations was to remove the rate schedule from the code, which allows the village to do that without the local law process. Other than that, if there was any specific questions from the board, we did provide that March memo. If there were any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
Any, any questions from any of the board members? My resident water expert, CJ Graziano, would you like to chime in with anything?
They did a great job, thank you, Natalie, they did a great job analyzing this, and the basic principle of when you have a water system is you have a revenue requirement that you need to run the system. Mickey and his team have done a great job, and we've changed up a little bit of the maintenance, and we've added a lot of well rehab money and different maintenance items into the water budget. So now, come with the better maintenance and with things that should have been done years ago that are now being done now, there's going to be a need for increase in revenue, and that increase in revenue should come from those who use the resource. So putting that in the rates of the people who use the water rather than taxes is generally the correct way to do it, and I think this is a very fair way of looking at it and a good step to put some of the rates back to where they belong and help continue that maintenance. You know, something that Bill has said, every three to five years, you're going to have to do a well rehab, and you rotate through your system, and it's a never-ending, you know, maintenance item. You know, you have to rehab those wells consistently, or you will start losing your capacity in them, and you don't want to do that. So this is a really good thing that's going on, and it's necessary. You know, it's not always, you know, the most popular thing, saying we're raising a rate, but this is something that's really necessary for what? To provide enough water and a sustainable water supply for the future that's paid for by the users of the water. So that's where I'm going to go with that.
Do any of the board members wish to comment before I move to the public? Okay, anyone, since there's only three people here, anyone wishing to comment on that could step right to the podium, and then I'll go over to the virtual component and see if anybody wishes to speak on it from there. Okay, anyone in the public who is on virtually wish to speak? Okay. Hearing no further comments from the public, can I please have a motion in a second to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Can I now have a motion in a second to adopt local law two of 2022 entitled Water as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now I need a roll call.
Trustee Graziano?
Aye.
Trustee Forelli?
Aye.
Trustee Burek?
Aye.
Trustee Gomez?
Aye.
Mayor Jakomaza?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, moving right along. Public comment on agenda items only. So if anybody wishes to speak on any other item on the agenda for this evening, now would be a good time. would be a good time. Anybody here in person? It's on.
Okay. Sandy Caverglione, Central Valley. I just...
Came it down.
There?
Yeah.
There? Okay. I just have some questions about the consent agreement that you're going to be discussing. And for full disclosure, my son's wedding is one of the weddings that is listed on here. In, I guess it would be paragraph number two and three, the word events and event venue are in quotation marks, so I was wondering if there's a definition for event or event venue?
There's not.
There's no, okay. Because what I noticed in, in this consent agreement, and as the board probably knows, Dr. Pulver in the past has been very charitable and generous in welcoming different organizations, Women of Woodbury, We Are Woodbury, I'm probably going to say it wrong, Chabad of Orange County, and I think there are some others, but those are the only three that I can remember right now. But he's been very generous in allowing those organizations to use his, his ballroom and his grounds, whether they were for fundraisers or just for charitable events, like the, We Are Woodbury did the senior tea party, Women of Woodbury also did a, a tea party for their members. It was just after the COVID restrictions were pretty much relaxed, so people were anxious to get out, and it was a beautiful place for people to go. I attended one of those events, and I can tell you, the, the seniors that were there were so appreciative to go to a place that many of them who've lived here for decades didn't even know it existed. He did that at no charge to anyone, and I know there are other organizations who would like to use his facility going forward, and I'm sure, again, Dr. Pulver has just been very compassionate and generous. He has a passion about the Rushmore Estate that he, I mean, he'll, he'll talk to anybody that will listen because of its rich history. So I guess my long-winded question is, this document doesn't address any of that, so I'm curious if...
How we're moving forward?
Yeah, if two months from now, something that isn't outlined here, if somebody wants a fundraiser or just an event there, how, is that going to be allowed?
For right now, no, because right now, what we're approving is the events that he currently has scheduled. What we are going to do is address this tonight, and then we're hopefully going to move forward with Mr. Pulver's attorney, I don't know if I'm being heard here, and hopefully come up with some either agreement or how we're going to proceed forward with that property. Kelly, if you want to...
Yes, so this consent agreement doesn't address going future, it just addresses these scheduled events that he has. If there's going to be any change, I mean, if he wants to add, add an additional event that's not listed here right now, under the code, so there's no ability for him to go forward and do that, so I think that the goal was to see, you know, what could be done, if anything, but that's not being addressed tonight. It's just the events that are scheduled. So I hope your daughter's wedding is one of the ones that was listed.
Okay, so I guess, I guess where I'm having, and I don't know that it's a problem, but I, I'm confused, because I'm a homeowner, I have a single-family home, which is according to the zoning board, or all the zoning meetings, that's what, or Dr. Pulver's home is a single-family home, that's what it's been, you know, stated as. In the thirty-plus years I've lived here, I've had multiple graduation parties, baptisms, communions, confirmation parties, I've had barbecues, I've allowed neighbors to have the same type of parties on my front lawn. Was I in some kind of violation?
That is, well, likely no, but I don't think that those events are on the same scale as what is being held here.
I can tell you, one of them was at least a hundred people.
Yeah, but there was no...
Are you charging for those parties? Are you receiving funds for those parties?
No, but the events that I'm talking about, that I think need to be in some way addressed, are, he's not charging for those either.
Well, those events are not being discussed by the village tonight, he's, these are the events that the village is permitting under...
But I think, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to argue with you, Kelly, but I think they are being addressed in that you don't have a definition for events, and yet in number five, you say that if he violates it by having anything outside of what's listed, then the whole thing is off, basically, and he's going to be punished for it.
Yes.
But that's, do you see what I'm saying? If, if, if any...
He has been held in violation for the items that he has held already, that has been addressed by the building department and addressed by the Z B A. So we asked him for a list of events that were planned for the rest of the year. This is what he provided, this is what the board is considering.
Right, but a lot of these organizations don't start planning something for September until about this time of year, and what I'm saying is, and I'm sure probably every member of this board has had some type of event, if that's what we're going to call parties and celebrations, and probably ninety-five percent of the residents of the village of Woodbury have had some type of event. So I'm trying to understand if, my mouth is dry, if Dr. Pulver's property is being addressed as a single-family home, and he's got like fifty-plus acres, why can't he have a charitable event there if everyone in this room can do the same?
Mr. Pulver's property is being used for a single-family home and a bed and breakfast, which is what he has approval for.
Exactly.
He is using it outside of what he has approval for, found by the building department.
For payment, for payment. I'm talking about things that he's not asking for any payment.
I'm telling you what's being addressed tonight. If you think that these organizations want to use this property, then I would suggest that those organizations work with Dr. Pulver and work with the Board of Trustees to see what can be happening with the piece of property. But other than that, he's been using it in violation of what it's permitted for.
Okay. All right, I, I don't think, maybe I'm not making my point clear, do you guys understand what I'm trying to say?
No, I understand what you're trying to say, and we are trying to work with, with Dr. Pulver to address this moving forward. This kind of, this process has been ongoing since the previous mayor, that we've been waiting on this list. It is, it is...
I understand that, I'm just saying that there's a difference between paid events, where there's a profit, and a charitable event, where, I mean, I can tell you, I'm just going to give you, for instance, when a well-known attorney in our town passed away from COVID, and the family was scattered throughout the country, Dr. Pulver was the first one to come to me and tell me that if that family needed a place to stay, without question, he didn't want anything for it, they could stay at his place. He is that type of charitable person, and I'm, I'm just concerned that this agreement, the way it stands right now, if, God forbid, somebody in our town was diagnosed with cancer next month, and their family had nothing, and they needed to have some kind of fundraiser, he would be the first one to say, have it at my place.
And nobody is doubting that his heart's always in the right place?
Okay.
That's not what we're addressing tonight. We're just trying to get through the events that we receive, that he's got on his calendar, and then, like I said, we are going to address this moving forward. This is, this is quite honestly just step one, okay? I have to get through the consent with the events that he's at now, and move forward with them, and then we will move forward together with, with his attorney, and see where we're going to go from here.
And, and just so that you're aware, this is something that the board is doing, taking that into consideration. Like I said, this is in violation of the use of the property, so they're actually thinking of Dr. Pulver and the unassuming bride and groom for, who never has booked their wedding or whatever other event is there. So this is sounding like a criticism, but the board is being very generous in taking this under...
No, I'm, I'm absolutely not criticizing. What I'm just trying to do is draw attention to that number five, where, again, any of the examples I used that aren't on here, that aren't, wouldn't be a profit-making event, since event is not, is not defined anywhere, there's no, this, this document gives him no avenue at this point to say yes to anybody who might need to use his facility free of charge.
That's correct.
So that's all I'm asking you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Are you able, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Who's this?
Mr. George.
So I would just like brief...
George, why don't you, let me, let me get through the public comment, let me get through the public that's here at Village Hall. Right now I have Mr. Bob Hunter at the podium, so, and then we'll go to you afterwards, we'll give everybody a chance to speak. So go ahead.
Robert Hunter, good evening, all.
Good evening.
I just read this today, and I was kind of surprised by it all. I think the board needs to step back and just reconsider the ramifications of it all, because, you know, in the future, who knows who's going to come before the board, an individual, a business, some group, they're going to say, well, you know, you did that for him, what can you do for me? It's going to be a mess. And I think the optics of it are really bad. I think when the general public hears about it, you're going to get a lot of flak. So slow down and really take a better look at this. I think you've got bad legal advice here. That's all. Thanks.
Great, I took that to heart.
Maria Hunter, I'm talking about the consent order, and this is anything against Seth Pulver, who owns the property. I was on the planning board when we approved this bed and breakfast. We went over and beyond giving him this approval to be a single family with a bed and breakfast, because at the time, bed and breakfast is you're supposed to live in the building that you have the bed and breakfast. We waived that. We've done different things for Mr. Pulver, for the, for Rushmore. As you know, he was accepted into the H O A to use their sewer, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, or he was no sewer, is he on, I'm not sure if he's on sewer or septic up there. It was clearly stated for the bed and breakfast that he have, have this, and if he ever had to change his mind, he was supposed to go back to the village, now it's the village planning board, to amend his approval. I've never seen it. I even mentioned it at the last time I was speaking that, at the zoning board meeting. Have him come back before the planning board and submit an amendment, and then you guys are covered. I'm concerned about the liability of the village on this, allowing this, these twenty events to happen. Facebook page, Monroe Matters, I did send a copy of the screenshot, I sent it to the, to the building department, I don't know if he has seen it, it was on March thirty-first. Woman is asking, anyone know of one or two lifeguards that can be at a function on June fourth at Rushmore Estates? Once this village signs this consent, are you opening yourself for liability? What if something happens, well, a young person, it's a bat mitzvah, what if someone gets hurt in the pool or the pond? You're approving this consent to allow this individual to have twenty events up there. I see it as a liability issue that the village is going, anyone can be sued, we know that, lawsuits can get tossed out, but I see this as an extreme liability. I haven't received an answer yet from the building department on my email I sent to them on the thirty-first, I don't even know if they, if Mike has seen it or not. I've sent a couple emails, I don't get responses back, but that's another issue for later. These weddings, we have a venue in Central Valley that has fireworks. Are we going to have fireworks? Do you have a plan for each event? The winery went through great pains to have events with their tent outside, they had to have a safety plan in place, traffic, police, security. Do you have enough places for people to go to use the facilities? Are you going to ask for a safety plan from, for each of these twenty events? I don't know what your answer is to that, but if you do it for one, one business, it should be held over to every business. And as my husband stated, I see it as a precedent that you're going to have other, there are large homes within Woodbury that can conceivably host weddings and events. We know some of them are going on illegally, if they're caught, you know, turn, people turn them in, but we're going, this seems to be an event that globally, Woodbury, we're opening ourselves up to it. I see also in the consent agreement, do you have an L L C signed? Is Mr. Pulver a hundred percent owner? Because it says, or members, he's the managing member. Does the, does the board have an L L C signed by him, that he is the sole owner, or is he a percentage of it? I would think that would be something that you would want in case something happens. And I'm sorry, Kelly, this is from my prior attorney years, so, and I understand charitable events. When this bed and breakfast was approved with that ballroom, it's a gorgeous room, it's a gorgeous place, the number of people that could be in there, when that room is empty, you could have, I don't know what the number is now, let's say it's a hundred. Now you put tables and chairs in there, you have a DJ, you have a party going on, you have a buffet going, that number is greatly reduced, because once you start putting furniture in, you can't have a hundred people in that room anymore. It's based on the area for people to move, so is the building inspector going to know how many people are coming for each event of these twenty events? Is the ballroom going to be capable to have this? It could be beautiful outside, it could rain, they're going to be inside. These are some of the things that I see as being looked at. I'm concerned, there's a H O A up there, it's village roads, I know what the facility, what it can hold. You have a wedding, you have fifty cars come up there, the parking, I know where the parking's going to be, it's going to be in the back on the gravel, you're not going to be able to park in that circle, you're supposed to have accessibility to a fire truck or an ambulance that needs to go up in there. Who's going to make sure that that, that long driveway, it's got to be at least five hundred feet longer than my driveway? How are you going to keep that clear? Who's going to monitor that? Are you going to pay for security, you're going to make sure security is there? These are all questions, I'm not denying a business to make an earning, but he was approved for a bed and breakfast, and I see that as a slap in the face to the residents of Woodbury, that we're changing this for one person. It's like spot zoning, and I feel that is very unfair to everyone. The H O A that's up there, do you have any input from the H O A? Handicap accessibility, how are you going to make sure that this, this facility has handicap accessibility, the emergency exits? Does it have enough firematic safety within the building? The restrooms, the kitchen, the food to be prepared, you have, going to have onsite caterers come up? These are all concerns that this, this increases the traffic, and I'm sorry, I live on Route thirty-two, it's going to go and pass my house. What if people are going up there, they're coming home, you're going through a neighborhood, and you're going back up onto thirty-two, where there have been accidents down there. I won't go into all those types of accidents that I've seen and witnessed on thirty-two in that section, but these things are concerns, and I won't talk anymore, because I guess CJ's rubbing his head from...
He's had a long day, it's not you.
I know, we've all had a long day. I mean, we've all, we all work, even though I'm retired, I am working, but, but these are just some, some of my minor concerns, and it's just, we do it for this one. I see the other homes that are being built in Woodbury that can host functions like this. Have the man come back to the planning board, strongly suggest he does an amendment to his prior resolution. It takes the onus off of this board, and open, to me, it's opening up this board to liability issues and... And as a resident, I don't want to see lawsuits that I have enough to pay for eventually down the road in my taxes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Maria.
Teresa Luongo, Central Valley. I'd like to also speak about Mr. Pulver and the violation consent order for 14 Castleton Drive in Highland Mills. I've known Mr. Pulver for a little over a year now, and he's a kind, generous, and wonderful man. He donates to the food pantry and the animal shelter often. He also volunteers at the food pantry. Mr. Pulver has allowed groups such as We Are Woodbury, Women of Woodbury, Shabbat of Orange County, to use his ballroom out of the kindness of his heart. He also allowed James Scoofis to have a celebration when he won the assembly seat. I believe that Mr. Pulver would not intentionally do something illegal, which the description of the violation implies. He was told by the previous building inspector in August of 2020 that the activities which he had planned would not be considered public assemblies. The special permit, which was dated April 3rd, 2012, states that an inspection by the village building department shall occur annually prior to the expiration of each renewed term of this special permit. A new building inspector was hired on August 2nd of 2021, and the violation was on October 7th, 2021. So I just wanted to know, when was there inspection during that time? Between August 2nd of 2021 and October 7th of 2021? Was there an inspection done?
That's not relative to this consent agreement. That issue was something that was before the ZBA that could have been raised at that public hearing. This is solely related to the consent agreement, not when inspections were done by the building department.
I couldn't attend that meeting, and I looked to see if the minutes were up on the website, and they still aren't up, so I don't know what the answer to that would be.
Teresa, as I told you, the meeting was less than a week ago, and clerks and secretaries have two weeks to complete the minutes of a meeting. So, you know, I'm sure they'll, they'll definitely be up within the, you know, no later than the date I told you, which I think was the 26th of April, whatever the two-week date would be. But, you know, minutes aren't something that are done very quickly. They're, they are a long process to make sure you get it done accurately.
Okay.
Okay, so like I told you in the email this morning, you know, the meeting was only six days ago, counting weekends and a holiday yesterday.
Okay. I just, there's a discrepancy. I don't know why one building inspector would say it's okay, and then we hire a new one, and then there's a violation, and we don't know if there's an inspection done. Or at least I don't. Regardless, ultimately, a resolution needs to be made, whether it be a special permit, or an amendment, or even a change of zoning, allowing Mr. Pulver to continue a living and not be left to sell Rushmore Estate, which is a historical, beautiful, and hidden gem of Woodbury. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Lithgow, you were looking to speak. Everybody in the public that's here at Village Hall has spoken, so I'll give you the floor.
Thank you. I'm going to try to be brief. You've heard many comments from the public. They're all relevant and something you'll consider going forward. One of the issues I do want to speak on was addressed in my March 9th letter. And I pointed out the need for definition. And I think what you've heard tonight reinforces that. We have proposed a definition that was basically dividing events into those which involve compensation, and those which did not, and those which are open to the public, and those which were by invitation essentially. We think that still makes sense to address some of the issues you heard tonight. So it would be possible to proceed forward with a not-for-profit to conduct a fundraising activity, or social activity for seniors, or something of that nature, similar to what Dr. Pulver and probably other people in the village have been doing for years. We recognize that the concern is, at least with the building inspector's notice, was primarily the idea that there was a business being conducted, and that business was a wedding venue. Don't necessarily agree with that, but we do think it's important that the village come up with a zoning that addresses those issues, and does so in a constructive manner. That is very much Dr. Pulver's intent. He wishes to engage with the village and basically work out the rules for an activity that could be conducted on the site. The consent order is an interim step. My understanding of it is, it's intended to maintain the status quo, particularly with respect to the events that are already been scheduled. As you heard, there may be situations where there would, will be an event that everybody would agree should be allowed to go forward. What I would suggest is, there'd be a safety valve in the agreement for the mayor to make that determination, or some other designated individual. If we can agree upon a definition, and the purpose of the definition is three of them. First, it's to make clear to Dr. Pulver what can and can't be done. Second, it's to make clear to the building inspector what should not be done. And third, is to make clear to these organizations and individuals who may wish to approach Dr. Pulver about doing something they've done before, whether or not it's going to be allowed until there's zoning in place. So I think those changes are fairly straightforward and can be made quickly. I think I can provide them to your attorney whenever she has an opportunity to review them, and we can go forward with that. Just briefly, to address some of the issues that Ms. Pulver raised, many of them are the kind of things you do consider during site review for a activity. Some of those, many of them actually are in your mass gathering permit for gatherings to go above a certain size. In the interim, in the order itself, there will be a plan provided or developed in consultation with the building inspector to ensure many of those issues are addressed. So, again, we look to go forward. We look to go forward in a constructive manner. We have provided you with a draft of what we think might be a suitable zoning regulation. Similar to what you allow for golf courses, and proposes an overlay similar to the bed and breakfast. But that's for another day, but we would like to get moving with that.
Thank you, George.
Do you have any questions? I can address them.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public who is on virtually wish to speak? Okay. Hearing none. We will move right along to administrative business. I need a, we have two sets of minutes to approve. So I'm looking for a motion in a second to accept, proceed to the minutes of the meeting held on March 24th, 2022.
I'll make the motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Aye. All right, I need a motion in a second to accept, proceed to the minutes of the meeting held on March 30th, 2022.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second by trustee Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Approval of abstract. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the abstract as presented?
Make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fire department equipment request. All right, Desiree, do you want to read that?
Yes. There are two this evening. The first is 2022-13 totaling approximately $6,354 for the purchase of LED lighting upgrades for Truck 522 and Truck 503. And equipment request 2022-14 totaling approximately $1,432 for the purchase of Class B badges for dress uniforms.
All right. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the fire department equipment request as read?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Budget modifications. You won't be reading this now. Can I please have a motion in a second to approve the budget modifications as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. Okay, so we are looking to change our second meeting for the month of May. Right now, we currently, the same, we have, we are looking, I'm looking for a motion in a second. Don't mind me, I'll catch up. So. Motion is second to change the Thursday, May 26th meeting to Tuesday, May 31st. Same start time at 7:30 PM. May 31st is the last day of the fiscal year. By changing the meeting to the 31st, this will enable the board to approve all vouchers in the current 2021, 2022 fiscal year. So, motion and a second. I'll make the motion. The second was by trustee Gomez. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Renew IT services. So can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to slot, to sign the block purchase renewal for PC surgeon for 100 hours of IT service at a cost of $8,500?
I'll make the motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Resolution. Moving along to old business, or continuing the old business. Establish water rates and fee schedule. Desiree, will you please read the resolution?
Now therefore, be it resolved that the town, I'm sorry, the Board of Trustees hereby adopts the following water rates effective with the June 2022 billing cycle. Can, do I have to read them all, Kelly, or can we just say as presented?
As presented is fine.
All right. Because it's quite a lot of numbers. And be it further resolved that the village clerk is hereby directed to add these rates to the fee schedule adopted and reviewed by the Board of Trustees at its annual reorganization meeting held the first meeting of each fiscal year.
All righty. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the following resolution that was just presented? Updating water rates that will go into effect with the June 2022 billing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. New business. Kelly Norton is up at bat. ARPA Annual Report Review Approval.
Yes, so as the board is aware, you've discussed the ARPA funds that you've received on several occasions. Just to bring you up to speed, for those of you who are not aware, the village received a total of $1,473,403 million from ARPA funds, and that's submitted in two tranches of $736, You talked about the use of those funds previously with the prior report. The government has now come up with a different way to go back and submit this information instead of a written report. But I just wanted to go over a couple of the areas you were going to use it towards your water improvements, water and sewer improvements. So the way that the first tranche and part of the second tranche would be reported based on your conversations would be for the projects of the Trout Brookwell, the second Trout Brookwell testing, Mama Leoni well testing, and for the sewer commonuters. That would total just over $1 million. You'd still have approximately $433,000 left, but we want to see how these projects go and what can be done and accomplished. But that would complete four projects that you've had on your waiting list, I guess, for a while. But in order for me to file that paperwork, I just need you to approve the use of those funds in that fashion.
So if I ask for a motion in a second to approve the ARPA fund distribution as presented by our attorney, Kelly Norton?
Yes.
Would be fine?
Unless you want me to read out the specific numbers for each one.
No, no, no. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Advertise for upcoming vacancies for the planning and zoning board. So it's that time of year again, ladies and gentlemen. So can I please have a motion in a second to authorize the village clerk to advertise for upcoming expiring terms and vacancies on the planning board and the zoning board of appeals? Letters of interest will be accepted by the village clerk until 4:00 PM on May 13th, 2022. I have a motion from trustee Gomez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, so carry. Okay, consent order. So Kelly, if you would like to give us some history backstory on 14 Castleton Drive LLC?
Yes, so I think you actually had a lot of that previously. I covered most of what I wanted to say, but as the board is aware, there was a violation that was issued by the building inspector. It's been challenged and brought to the ZBA. We don't have a final written decision by the ZBA at this point, but knowing that going forward, this was considered a violation, it was discussed that the board would potentially consider a consent agreement to permit the events that were scheduled, and that list of events was provided to the board by Dr. Pulver, to allow those to continue so as not to harm, as I said before, innocent, unassuming brides, grooms, and other people that have planned these events. So this consent agreement does just that.
Before, well, let's start with this. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the consent agreement with 14 Castleton Drive LLC permitting 20 specific events to occur while the applicant obtains the needed approvals permits as an event venue?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion?
Yes.
You okay? The floor is yours.
All right. I got to say, this, you know, Maria mentioned it before when I grabbed my hands on my face, this is one of the most difficult things I've been thinking about since I've been on this board. That's kind of where that exasperation came from earlier. There's really a couple of things at play here that are really bothering me. You know, one of them is the fact that these young people are having their wedding, and you don't want to, you know, it's a once-in-a-lifetime event, you don't want to mess with that. You know, so that's really tugging at my heartstrings. However, I am really, what couldn't and shouldn't be done there was well-defined. There is a special permit, what can be done, when food can be served, what time of day it can be served. And there is a violation on the property, so that's tugging me the other way, as I'm very, as people know, very code-oriented and law-oriented, and follow things very scriptively that way. So this has been really tugging at me both ways. And, you know, one of the bigger issues I have also is, as the mayor mentioned earlier, we've been discussing this since the previous administration, and the previous list of nine events has somehow grown into 20 as we've been discussing this, which bothers me greatly as well. So for those reasons, I'm going to vote against this tonight. Thank you.
Any other board members with comments?
I have a question, questions for Kelly.
Yep.
In light of some of the comments that were made tonight. Kelly, could this, the approval of this consent be considered or construed as spot zoning?
No.
Would each consent agreement to address, I think it was Bob's comment, Bob Hunter, we do this for one, we do this for all. Would each consent agreement stand on its own facts and circumstances, or does this create a precedent?
It would stand on its own facts and circumstances. We do try to make anything that the board considers like this as unique as possible to those facts and those circumstances. And you're allowed to vote how you see fit on each.
How would the village's liability with approval of this consent differ if he were to have this property as an approved use? So would we be any more liable proving these events than if he were to go through the proper avenue of having the zoning changed, and we all agreed? What liability would the village have then versus now?
So if there was a change of use, and he went through the planning board, and he got all of that, he would have already in place, you know, the traffic safety measures, things like that. That is something that we incorporated into this consent agreement, where there does need to be an agreement for the events with the building inspector, so that he can take care of things like the parking and the restrooms and those safety items. Obviously, we always want there to be emergency organization, accessibility, and things like that. So one thing that is not in the version that's actually before the board, but I know we spoke about it because I sent this to you previously, was an indemnification clause that was raised by, and issued by a board member. So the one that's before you is not the final version, but we talked about the change that would be made, which was the indemnification. that would be made, which was the indemnification. So you would be protected against that in this respect, and if the code was changed, it would be thoroughly vetted by your planning board and/or zoning board, however it's set up in the code.
Okay.
Does each event have to, to Mrs. Hunter's point, have a building inspector's approval of emergency service access? Would the fire department have to go in for each one? Or is it we're saying, no, this is a blanket approval, continue business as usual without, because I know that's more of the planning board's purview, but are we going to require?
So if a lot of the events are similar in size, in however they say?
So it could be a generic, this is the plan and?
It could be a generic, this is the plan, but if something were to differ, and you know, they let the building inspector know about that, he's going to want different protections in place. So, and we'll work with the building inspector, obviously, to make sure there's something in there that protects the village, but takes into account the building code, the fire code, and things like that.
Okay. All questions I have, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, this? CJ, I was torn between the people that, you know, booked their events and all this, and this turned into just having one or two to 20. You know, we gave him ample time from when we had the prior mayor and wanted a list, and he just kept, I don't know, say blowing it off or whatever, and then finally came to a list of 20 people, which, I don't know, it seems like he's taking advantage of the fact that he knows that 20 people booking their events, these people are there for a wedding, and who's going to look like the villain when we say no, it's going to be us if we say no. And knowing that he did not have approval to do this and still doing it, it kind of like, I know how great a guy he is, I got nothing against him, but I don't know if it was just showing, my caring, whatever, if there was a bottom line that he had to meet and saying, oh yeah, come have your wedding here, when you know you didn't have approval, it kind of bothers me also because, hey, I'm a cop, and you know I would like law and order. But I also agreed with Maria, the big point, that was one of my points, the village getting indemnified if something happened, and she did address it for me, because in the long run, that's, I want what's best for Woodbury and for all the residents and those that booked their weddings there to have a great time. So I'm still on the fence of which way, because I can see both sides of both stories, and I don't know, it's kind of putting a, sort of taste in my mouth, but I'll be with that.
You're going to have to make a decision quickly, sir. Okay, just, just, I want to kind of echo what CJ had said, Graziano, and this has been ongoing for some time. It was one of the first meetings I took in January when I first became mayor. Our attorney set it up with Seth Pulvers, newest attorney, which was George Lithgow at the time, and I still think it took us two months to get the final, the final list of actual events, and it really shouldn't have taken that long. So where I differ with CJ is, is that I will be voting to approve the consent agreement, but moving forward, this snail's pace that we have been on with this so far, we have to get off that treadmill. So it started with the former mayor, Mayor Egan, and it sort of landed in my lap, and right now I am just, like I said, kind of done, I need to move forward with this. Mr. Lithgow today sent us something that we can sort of grind our teeth on moving forward, which is good, which means that we have something to begin with, but I can't continue to have events scheduled there and have this prolonged without having some kind of resolution. So at this point, hearing, I'm not 100% sure which way the board will go, so I am going to do this via roll call. So, Desiree? Did you want to speak on it at all?
Well, I agree with a lot of the comments that were said here tonight. I also agree that this is the first step towards going the way I think it should go to be through the proper channels, which is the planning board and the zoning board.
So I can have Mike, Vic, please, on the mic.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay. So I think this, although this is the first step, and these events were pre-planned, I think going forward, it does need to go through the proper channels, it does need to go through zoning and the planning boards, so that everything is in place for his events. So that's pretty much what I wanted to say on that. There are a lot of good points brought up tonight. I do know we're going to have an indemnity in place, so it will protect the boards, so that's why I'm okay with this for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Furelli. All right, we'll move on to the roll call, Desiree, please.
Trustee Graziano?
No.
Trustee Furelli?
Yes.
Trustee Burick?
Yes.
Trustee Gomez?
I'll say yes.
And Mayor Jacomaza?
Yes.
So four to one.
Thank you. All right, moving right along. Can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the Business Associate Agreement with Marshall and Sterling as it relates to their managing of the dental benefits for the village?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Stormwater control facility meeting agreement with the shops of Woodbury. Can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the stormwater control facility maintenance agreement for the shops of Woodbury as required by the planning board and the village's responsibility as an MS4?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Trustee Burick. Any discussion?
I do, just one thing.
Okay.
I just wanted to let the board know that we did receive the stormwater bond calculations from Natalie, so what I provided to the mayor for signature actually changes paragraph number seven, where it was $10,000, and it's changed to $33,000, and change, it's like $33,430, something like that. But I just wanted to let you know that in the final version, that number will reflect the recommendation of your engineer.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay. Can, would, I already got a motion and a second? All in favor, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. All right, moving right along, Evaku, dioxide monitoring agreement. So can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the full service advanced dosing and remote monitoring program proposal from Evaku in relation to the odor and corrosion control at the Highland Mills, Pine Hill, Smith Clover, and Hollitt Pump stations?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the hope is, ladies and gentlemen, that the odor that permeates through Valley Avenue will be completely eliminated at this point. So it'll take the guesswork out of adding a chemical we never mentioned in the village of Woodbury, which is bioxide. Never. Look at her, look at her face. Okay.
Bioxide is very expensive.
Yes, so actually this could, it may pay for itself.
Yeah, we're hoping.
We're hoping. Okay, so a few weeks back, I had the opportunity to sit down with the town Cornwall supervisor and the mayor of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, along with Urban Mead of La Bella, formerly Chazen, to discuss the continued monitoring of the Woodbury Creek tributary of the Moona Creek. It was decided amongst the three municipalities, along with the town of Woodbury, to continue this program at a cost of $16,000, shared evenly amongst all four municipalities. So can I please have a motion and a second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the proposal from La Bella for them to maintain the existing monitoring and reporting in 2022 of the Woodbury Creek tributary of the Moona Creek?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Moving right along, all right, we have a schedule, we have to schedule a public hearing, a moratorium waiver request for Popeyes. Can I please have a motion and a second to schedule a public hearing to be held on May 12th, 2022, at 7:30 PM at Village Hall to consider a request for relief from Local Law 9 of 2021 for the property located at 20 Center Drive in Woodbury Center, Popeyes?
I'll second.
All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hey, Kelly, our public hearing notice is going forward, since we're doing a hybrid here. How, can you send me wording for that, so that I know how to word it properly in the notice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, finally, finally, the last item, which was, no, actually, we have two more items, because we have an additional item here. So MS4 Annual Report Draft available for review on website. The State Pollute and Discharge Elimination System Permit Procedures require the village, as an operator of a regulated municipal separate storm sewer system, MS4, file an annual report to maintain permit coverage. A draft of the annual report for the period ending March 9th, 2022, has been posted on the website for public information and comment. The report complies with the DEC mandatory format. The final report will be filed with the state prior to June 1st, 2022's deadline. And that's really just, all I have to do is just state that for the record? Okay. Okay, finally, I need to have a resolution, releve of delinquent water bills. So Desiree, will you please read the resolution?
Yes, there are two, one for each of your water billing areas. The first is to levy a total of 854 delinquent water bills for the Consolidated Water Fund that totals $234,595 and 12 sets.
Do I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution as read?
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second? Seconded by Tara. All, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So that's one.
And the next is for the levy of 22 delinquent water bills for the Water 6 Fund, also known as Amder Park, that totals $5,662.68.
Motion?
I'll second.
I'll second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. That concludes our business of the evening. Right now, I will open the floor to public comments. Anyone for the public wishing to speak? You're getting there, we're getting there.
Maria Hunter, once again, I want to thank the board first, first of all, for having this hybrid meeting in person and on Zoom. I think we need to start getting out to see people in person, so I thank the board for doing this. I know you had your hydrogeologist here. Are you, is the village drilling on Route 32, just past Hazard on the east side of 32? Are you drilling there? On 32, Hazard, just north of it, north of it on the east side, between 32 and the railroad? Are you drilling in there?
No, we're not.
Then someone is drilling in there. I don't know who's drilling, I don't know if there's a permit that needs to be done for that, but?
That's Mr. Anton, right? I think that was Mr. Anton.
I don't think, does he go all the way around to 32 on the other side?
He goes pretty, not on your side.
No, I mean, from the church property, the whole house, two north.
Quite a few acres back there, Natalie, I think you spoke to him.
I think you're correct, Desiree, I think William Anton is on Hazard Lane.
I was just curious, because they were drilling there last week, so as long as you're aware of it. I wasn't home last, was it two weekends ago? The water tank that's on Ridge Road, that's in my backyard view, the 25-foot tall water tank? The overflow, that water's coming from this aquifer that you're doing the well monitoring down in Cornwall, that's the water pipeline, goes into this tank. That is water that's overflowing back into the creek, past my house, back down the Cornwall. Someone needs to look into that. I don't know who to talk to, the water department, they need to reach out to their water department, but we cannot have this tank constantly overflowing, because it's also flooding my neighbor's property that abuts me, where we triangle together. So that's a waste of water. I mean, water's precious to us, and if that's being overflowed, someone needs to look into that. I want to thank you, CJ, for standing your ground on this issue. I know it was a tough decision for everybody, but after hearing what Trustee Gomez said about, originally there was nine events, went up to 20, that's disgraceful on this property owners, it's disgraceful. And I thank you for trying to move this forward, solidify it, enough is enough already. How many times can we turn our backs and close our eyes to things that are going on in town, but to go from nine to 20, and just hearing it now, tonight, from the board? I'm beyond words with that. On a nicer note, I did submit a letter to the town and to the village. The Memorial Day Parade is Sunday, May 29th, I just have to wait for a response because of the permits and everything. Once I get approval for the permits, that the town and the village are okay with the parade, I will start blasting it that there is a parade being, but I don't want to overstep my bounds without having permission granted first with the permits. I am on the parade committee, I am helping Phil and Rosemarie and the other two gentlemen, Kenny and Mr. DeSisto. So we're going to be moving forward, there's going to be some changes, and I'm looking forward to no rain on that day, so it's a parade to honor and remember people who've served for us. It's not a parade of politicians, it's not a parade of fun, what's it, fun, but to remember. And we're not sure if we're going to have at the end where we used to have the refreshments. We're still debating that because of COVID, but everything that's being, you know, no masks and whatnot, so we still have to make that decision. I'll, I have to talk to Phil this week. So I think that was it, but I thank the board once again for having this meeting and having me speak twice tonight, not five times like last meeting.
Maria? So the request is just to waive the fee, you still have to get the permits, so you might want to start that process at least, and then the fee gets waived.
Okay, well, the permits are where?
Well, you have to get the public assembly permit from the building department, and then the parade permit from the town.
Which you're on the agenda for already.
The town you're on the agenda, your request came in after this agenda was already made, so you're on the agenda for the town on Thursday night.
All right, I have the town.
And this one's on May 12.
Is it on the website, the village website, or not?
You'd have to check with Michael, I'm not sure if his permits are on the website.
On the website? They have my email, just let me know.
So the just a formality to fill the permits, whatever is required for that, but the fees was what you're requesting to be waived.
So we give them to the town board, not to the police department, right?
The town board, correct. And I, the previous supervisor had it through his office, I think it's through mine now, but I'll check when I get into mine.
I believe it's the town board, okay. And June 25th, First Responder Day. It was a great event last year, I know the ambulance, fire, police have all been involved in it, they had a meeting, I couldn't stay for the one tonight because I wanted to be here, but it's moving forward, so that date in mine also, June 25th.
Thank you. Anyone else present in Village Hall? Anyone virtually?